Welcome, everybody. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we start our meeting, bless this council and remind us that we are here to make decisions that affect our city and constituents. Guide us to be the leaders and stewards of our city and give us the strength to come together with our differences as we come to an agreement that best benefits our community. Bless those in attendance and keep us safe. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee's Summit Regular Session Number 36. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMoro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The agenda is adopted, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And that also passes unanimously, thank you. Next is Council Roundtable. Items of general interest, community announcements, things going on in your district. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. The farmer's market, of course, I had to talk about it. But it opened Saturday. A lot of people there. And there were some new vendors. And then the Wednesday market opens tomorrow.
It's exciting.
I know.
Thank you. Councilmember Edson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the, what, over 200 volunteers that were out Saturday picking up trash. We drove down 470, and there were just volunteers everywhere. It was so great. And then today, MoDOT had over two dozen people on 470 up by Struther picking up trash. They missed this plastic chair that's been sitting in the median for a couple of months, but I'm sure they're gonna come back and get it. But, so it's gonna start looking better really quick. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do know there's a lot going on this weekend. Councilmember Pryor?
Sorry, I forgot one thing. The firefighter award ceremony was Saturday. And Don Bennett from Waters sang, and he did a phenomenal job. He sang the National Anthem. I don't think he's here, though. But yeah, you can watch it on the, I think, the firefighter, the beginning part of the award ceremony on the firefighters' Facebook page, the city. I don't know what it is. But yeah, he did phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna go back to that Clean Team, Clean Streets. You've got this Saturday, next Saturday, and the next Saturday, 9:00 a.m., one hour of your time. You could be a part of cleaning up Lee's Summit. There's also a street sweep clean from 10 to, Mr. Dunning, 10 to 2, that the city is also sponsoring. So there's a couple places to sign up. One is on the city website, but also the Just Serve, the one that's doing the, every single weekend. It's JustServe.org. And we're just making it, everybody's making a difference in our community. So make sure that if you're out there, I'm gonna be out there this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., and I'll make sure I do some social media pictures. But it's nice to do that if you're, if you do get out there. Make sure you're posting and sharing anybody that's out there. So, all right. Well, let's go to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on one second. Since you're late, I'm gonna put you on the spot and say, did you have fun cleaning up on Saturday?
It was a blast.
It was?
It was, actually.
You look like you had fun.
It was a good time. No, we, we were able to do a lot of good. I mean, there was a lot of people, and there's a lot of trash.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we've been talking about that.
So, no, it was good. I think it's definitely worth all the time and effort, so.
I heard that you just got back from Jeff City. Did you clean up Jeff City while you were there?
We didn't pick up any trash. There might have been something there, too.
Just wondered. All right. Thank you, sir. I'll let you get, I'll let you get logged in while we open the first public hearing. I'm gonna close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A. This is a rezoning from Ag to RP3, and it is a preliminary development plan. Colton's Crossing, approximately 74 acres on the west side of Hamlin Road. Would all those wishing, wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Does the applicant have a presentation, or is staff going first? Staff's going first. I see Mr. Josh Johnson striding down the steps.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and members of City Council. Excuse me, I'm already getting tongue-toed. I'll start by entering staff's list of exhibits, 1 through 22 into the record.
Please enter 1 through 22 into the record.
I'll go through more than I normally do here, just to set the project up. So before you tonight is both a rezoning and a preliminary development plan. Project there is located along the end of Hamlin Road, east of 291, and where Hook would be. You see on the left side of this image here, the right-of-way for future Hook Road interchange. Site plan here detailing the project, going to RP3, 201 total lots. You see 68 of those are duplex units. And Phase 1 there kicks off the development. I'm not gonna read the whole slide there, but you can kind of get a feel for the breakdown of the units and the rough density of the project. Elevations. You can see the materials here are common residential board and batten and lap siding. Masonary bases are provided throughout. Here's the duplexes. Again, similar types of materials. I will point out, you'll note, there are single-car garages in those. In our duplex units, only one enclosed space is required. So that's why you're seeing the single-car garage. The proposed setbacks are actually greater than what we require there. You see in the colored, the turquoise highlighted areas, they're actually proposing greater setbacks than what we would require. Actually, I'm gonna back up out of that a little bit. There are a variety of infrastructure requirements required with this development. I'm actually gonna summarize them in a single go here. So let me go back to the site plan. Along with the project, or a series of infrastructure requirements, improving Hamlin Road to an interim road standard from the project up to Thompson Road, and with that, bringing water line down. There is the potential for an upsizing agreement with that water line. Also, contribution from the developer to a downstream sewer improvement is required. Oh, and Hook Road, as it goes through the project here. This is Hook Road. And there'll be an interim improvement till more development happens around the site, and there's a traffic warrant to improve that road to a full arterial standard. So that is the summary of the project and some of the improvements that are needed. With the improvements and the conditions of approval that are included in your ordinance, our infrastructure requirements are met. Not a lot around the project, but we do find it to be a mixture of residential project, products, excuse me, which is supported by the comprehensive plan. Not a lot to be incompatible with out there right now, but there have been a variety of developments proposed in this area, and they all seem to be residential or mixed-use in nature. But none of those have come to fruition, so this is really almost in isolation, I'll say. Oh, something I didn't point out. You got a clubhouse and a pool in the center of the project, which, given the project's location, is, it's good to have an amenity. With that, we get a good Hamlin Road improvement there and some connectivity through the project, which, with that and the Hook Road improvements, supports our Thoroughfare Master Plan. And I think with that, I'd stand for any questions the council would have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Or, I'm sorry, do you want to do applicant presentation or word? Any comments?
Um.
Okay.
Say a little bit.
These are all for sale type of, type of thing?
I'd be open for any questions as well, but I know for us, we know about a lot of the developments that are being proposed in the area, and we think we are in line with that. As far as price point, which is something we're really trying to get into, is, can't promise anything, of course, with building cost and when we actually break. We are looking at the duplexes as being able to be duplexes as well as single-family attached, so possibly we can hit a lower price point for those three-bedroom, two-bath units. There are a lot of improvements, so obviously that does drive some cost up, but our goal is to try and make it as affordable as possible for better first-time homebuyers or, you know, down to $360,000 houses or $400,000 house, first-time homebuyer, but that's what we're doing. So, we are also bringing water to other residents there that don't currently have water. So I think they have the potentiality to tap sewer, which they don't currently have as well.
Like the ones across the street?
Correct.
Yep. Across, it'd be on the...
Be on the west side.
Yeah, west side, yep.
I've taken the, add into a cul-de-sac, so they're, we're not disrupting their current situation out there. They'll have less through traffic than they had currently. Really all I have, I think, across the board. I'm open for any questions.
What, on the, are those just floor plans? I just wonder, 'cause they're, they are, you're trying to hit that first-time homebuyer potentially. Are they, are they ranches, or do you have some, I see the, the two-story type of single-family. Are those small ranches, though, or are those?
I mean, we're, your four bedrooms, just shy, right around 2,000 square foot, your three bedroom's gonna be right around 1,600 to 1,700. So they're gonna be the smaller, condensed, you know, we can go up.
Will the duplexes, will they be, will they be, it looks like there's gonna be a second level on those.
No, that's not.
That's just, just, that's just the pitch of the roof? Okay, so it's gonna be, they're gonna be ranch, then?
Yeah, almost all of these will be slab-on-grave, with the exception of, on the exteriors, we're looking at doing blockouts for, you know.
Right. Okay. Very good. And then, phase, that's Phase 3 where the cul-de-sac is. That's not those homes across the street, right?
So Phase 3 where?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, starts to touch the corner there, but doesn't touch some of those lots, and then Phase 3, we, we touch the rest.
Got it. Got it. Okay.
We're running our, our water line, obviously, along with our roads.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. Will the duplexes be owner-occupied? Are you gonna try to make them owner-occupied, you know?
Our intention is to, I mean, obviously, we benefit those people who wanna build for rent, to buy for rent. That's not something we're looking at right now, at this point. Can't tell people they can't rent their, you know, out, but our goal would be to sell them, single-family attached, honestly, but we wanna have the zoning and the, and the ability to be flexible halfway through and at the front. But our goal is not to make this a rental.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And those, this might be staff, but the detention basins, they're, they're dry basins. They're not, there's, there's not water in those. Those are just for, for heavy rains? Is that right?
I'm gonna have to squint real hard on this drawing.
Squint real hard?
Yes, I believe they're both dry detention basins.
Okay. Very good. All right, other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And is, at this time, I'm gonna ask, is there's anyone here that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. All right, and then, are there any additional questions from the council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? All right, thanks. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I love this, and thank you for bringing your development here. I think that it's gonna, if it gets approved, I think it'll be very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Create some activity, some more activity on the south side, close to 291. And sounded like there was money going towards road improvements, or sewer improvements later on, so that'll help later on, 'cause there's a bunch of sewer issues down there. All right, then, with that said, saying no further discussion. Councilmember DeMoro, would you please read Bill Number 23-075?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading Bill Number 23-075, an ordinance approving rezoning from District Ag to District RP3, and planned industrial mixed-use and preliminary development plan for approximately 74 acres located along the west side of southeast Hamlin Road, one-half mile south of southeast Thompson Drive, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 23-075, by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Lovell. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it passes 9-0. So thanks for investing in Lee's Summit. All right, well, I think that's our only public hearing. It takes us to public comments.
And we've not received any public comments.
All right. Thank you. Then we will go right on to presentations. We have a presentation for conceptual economic development incentive request. This is Performance Food Group regarding a tax abatement for facility expansion at 290 in southeast Thompson Drive. Reinhardt Service Food Service LLC is the applicant. Mr. Bushack?
Good evening, David Bushack, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. This is a conceptual presentation for an economic development incentive request for an industrial expansion project. The applicant will speak first, and then I'll provide comments after they present.
Thank you, sir.
Don't know how close I need to get to that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name's Tammy Gardner. I'm the corporate VP of Tax and Business Incentives for PFG. We are the parent company of the applicant. I'm joined this evening by Scott Sinquanta, the president of our Lee's Summit facility, and Chris Lloyd, who's the SVP and Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development from Aguirre Woods. I want to thank David and Scott, I mean, I'm David and Ryan, I'm sorry, for all their help getting us ready for tonight. Really appreciate it. Couldn't have done it without them. With that, we'll get started. Let's see. So tonight, we're gonna go over our company history, a little bit about our, or a lot about our proposed project, I should say, the requested economic development support, and the value proposition for the city. Okay. A little bit about our company, Performance Food Group. Through many subsidiaries, we market and distribute thousands of food and food-related products from our distribution centers to over 300 customers in the United States. Our Lee's Summit location, which is also known as Performance Food Service Lee's Summit, many of you probably are familiar with the name, they are owned by a subsidiary of ours, Reinhardt Food Service. That is the applicant for the incentive. That location's part of our food service segment. So we have many segments in PFG, but this segment, we call it Broadline Food Service. So they are offering food service operators everything from their mop, to their to-go cup, to their plates, to their custom-cut meats, you name it, one-stop-shop for a food service operator. Each of our distribution centers is run very autonomously by a team that very much understands their local market, their customers, their needs, and they get to make their own decisions. So each of them very much operates like its own little business, even though we're part of a big company. Like I said, we service 300 customers across the US, but our food service segment services over 175,000 customers. This particular location in Lee's Summit is at capacity. And so we'll get more into our project and, and what we're looking to do to kind of remedy that. Let's see. So the facility on southeast Thompson has been, there's been some confusion. I'm not really sure exactly when it opened, but since the 90s, it's been there. It was American Food Service once upon a time, and then Reinhardt Food Service purchased it in 2012, and then PFG purchased Reinhardt in 2019. And so together, PFG and Reinhardt are looking to retrofit the existing facade and building and expand on the, the rest of the land that's available. A little bit more about the Lee's Summit facility. They're very active in Chamber of Commerce, like many of our, most, all of our facilities. You know, we really try to partner with the local food banks and, and, you know, organizations in the community and do food donations as much as possible. We also, I know here specifically, the Lee's Summit facility supports the Oktoberfest festivities. Like I said, we're at capacity. So we are looking to either expand our existing facility, or if necessary, you know, look for a site that would be suitable for us. Staying in Lee's Summit is our preference, right? We have great highway access where we are, and we have a very tight-knit group of employees that we would like to retain. But with the existing footprint, we are really not able to meet the growing demands of the customers that we have today, and obviously no room for growth beyond that. We service six states, but really, we're a very locally-focused business. Most of our business is within 50 miles of the facility, and 80% is within the greater Kansas City area. I've listed here some of our key suppliers that are local: Mission Foods, Zaregas, and Mr. Dell's Foods, and then also some of our key local Mr. Dell's Foods, and then also some of our key local customers, which you may be familiar with. Oh, I'm not advancing, I'm sorry. I'm just reading, thank you. Okay, now I'll stay on it, I promise. Um, okay, so as I mentioned, we're at capacity, we're actually even utilizing onsite, there are a number of trailers onsite that we're keeping dry goods stored in because we just have no room to store inventory. So, and there's really not outside storage, um, facilities nearby for us. So as I said, we just, we can't continue under our current conditions. We either need to expand onto the usable portion of our lot, or look for a new site to support our planned growth. Um, our proposed project would be an expansion. Today, we are at a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, we'd like to expand to roughly a hundred and seventy. We estimate the cost of the project to be twenty-two million dollars, um, and ideally, we'd like to start, um, middle of the summer, and plan would be, if everything went well, be the fully operational by spring twenty-twenty-five. Um, the current facility has a hundred and fifty-six associates, payrolls for the year is roughly thirteen million dollars. Um, like I said, if we expand in place, we definitely expect to retain all of our associates, and we would create a minimum of thirty-five new jobs over five years.
Mr. Dang, I sent you a text, doesn't have to do with the presentation, would you check it?
Um, this slide, uh, the green areas here depict where we would expand. So there would be a freezer expansion, a cooler expansion, and a very large dry warehouse expansion, as well as that red-roofed area would be a new employee entrance and breakroom for our, our employees. Uh, we did have a blight study completed, and similar to the area surrounding us, um, our existing site was determined to represent a blighted area. Uh, we believe that the proposed investment in our existing facility, supported by the proposed abatement, will result in a more attract, attractive industrial asset for the community. Okay, so this slide shows the existing, um, blight zone, if you will, the L-CRA boundary. Our facility is represented by the yellow star, and you'll note that the entire area to the north, inside those black bold lines, um, is currently, has been previously designated as within the L-CRA boundary, so we are just outside of it. Um, and as you're probably aware, that act was passed to encourage investment in the community, um, and that's what we want to do. We want to invest in our community and stay in Lee's Summit. So, the way it works at PFG is our board every year sets a fixed amount of money that we get to spend on capital projects, right? And all our facilities are competing for those monies. Um, so to increase our IRR, um, and therefore the competitive position of this project for capital, we are requesting a sales tax exemption on materials, the city portion of which is just about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and a real and personal property tax abatement of seventy-five percent over ten years, the net present value we estimate to be just over one-point-one million. The total support request, um, those combined amounts, is about seven-point-four percent of our projected investment. And like everybody that I'm sure you're hearing today, right, uh, we're, we are experiencing higher construction costs, higher borrowing costs, higher every cost, right? So, um, we are, uh, definitely looking for ways to make this project more attractive for final approval internally. Uh, this slide lists some of the recent industrial projects that have received incentives. Our project is closest in size to Zarega Pasta, which is the second one listed here, and our support request is in line with what was awarded for that project. I will note, though, that, um, the abatement guidelines suggest for a property of our size, with our job creation, uh, with our wage amounts, would support, um, a hundred percent abatement, but we're asking for seventy-five percent. Oh, let's go back here. Um, our project in Lee's Summit would support many of the city's targeted outcomes. Manufacturing and distribution's a targeted industry, we would retain the existing economic base that's there today. Uh, we offer a safe working environment, quality jobs, career advancements available at all levels. Our average wage for our current people is thirty-five dollars an hour, well above city average, and we think this promotes an environment that encourages growth and sustains the existing tax base. So for the L-CRA guidelines, we meet seven of the thirteen criteria. Did I go the wrong way? There we go, okay. This kind of outlines, um, the property tax revenue over the term of the abatement. Um, over the requested term, all jurisdictions, right, would receive more property tax revenue than if we weren't to do the project. Um, over the ten years, we estimate that we would pay additional five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in property taxes, and a total of two-point-six million dollars, um, for the whole term. Three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand of that would go to Lee's Summit. So there's definitely going to be gains for the city and the other taxing jurisdictions if we were to move forward with the project. Um, we also estimate that, based on the machinery and equipment that we need to purchase to outfit the building, we will be contributing sales tax revenue of roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This slide talks a little bit about the indirect impact of the project, um, and both in the spend and in the job creation. Um, so according to the Economic Policy Institute, our project, uh, would create just shy of a hundred indirect jobs and an additional payroll of seven to nine million dollars each year. And that additional payroll then creates additional jobs, right, in other economics up, in other economic sectors, excuse me. Again, we estimate that the project will cost about twenty-two million dollars, and that's estimated that it will create another hundred construction jobs and two hundred other indirect jobs. So, lots of great job creation. Uh, fact of the matter is, we think the project is, is a good project, it'll be good for the local economy, it's a win-win. We win, we get to stay in Lee's Summit, we get to keep our jobs, and we get to continue to grow the tax base here in Lee's Summit. Um, we look forward to your feedback, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Usually we do questions after we talk this...
Or David, maybe David's next, sorry. But if you want to ask questions, you can, whatever...
Usually, usually we do, but I have a couple of questions...
Okay.
To summarize.
Yeah, sure.
Twenty-two million?
Twenty-two million, yep.
Um, and then, um, how many currents, how many new square feet are you going to be building?
Uh, fifty to sixty thousand.
Fifty to sixty thousand, and how many do you have currently?
One-twenty. We're at a hundred and twenty, we're going to go to roughly one-seventy, one-eighty.
Okay. How many current jobs do you have, and then how many new ones will you be adding?
So we have a hundred and fifty-six associates today, and Scott can speak more, but Scott estimates that based on our growth, um, forecasts, our sales growth forecast, that we'll create a minimum of thirty-five jobs o, over five years.
Okay, that probably was in there, I just must have missed that, but thirty-five new jobs, and you're saying the average of those new jobs is thirty-five dollars an hour?
The current wage is, the current average is thirty-five.
Thirty-five dollars an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, that helps. Um, I just want to get those in, in our head as we...
Yep.
Because he's going to start talking...
Lots of numbers.
Spreadsheets, yeah. So I want to make sure we, we have a picture of what we're doing. You're, you're taking a hundred and twenty thousand square foot building and turning it to one-seventy, one-eighty.
Yep.
You bring in thirty-five new jobs on top of your current hundred and fifty-six...
Right.
And your current average wage is thirty-five dollars an hour.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have questions for you in a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Bushak.
Right, I will get right to my summary. And this is the format that you've seen many times before, so I'll walk through the incentive requests and summarize what it means for you. So we start thinking about this in terms of a timeline. During the construction period, they're requesting sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, and as an additional point of reference, it's only sales tax exemption on the construction materials for the physical construction of the building. They're requesting personal property tax abatement on the new machinery and equipment, but they're not requesting sales tax exemption on their purchase of the new machinery and equipment, so it's only the construction materials. Then during the first ten years of the project, they're requesting seventy-five percent real property tax abatement on the added value to the property, so it's the incremental increase only, and I'll explain to you in more detail what that means in a moment. And then they're requesting seventy-five percent abatement on the personal property, which is the new machinery and equipment that they place inside the facility that they'll be purchasing and paying sales tax on wherever those purchases were made. The property tax benefits to the taxing districts in the city, this is the taxes that this parcel of property paid last year, and let me pause there to say one thing, you just saw the diagram that she ended with, there's a parcel of property that the structure's located on today, they're adding to that structure, so they're not really building a separate building next to it or attached to it, it's kind of built into the existing structure, so it's not like there's, there's a footprint and they're adding a new footprint, it's sort of molded into the structure, but it's a single parcel. So, these are the taxes that were produced last year by that parcel, this is the projection of the taxes and the pilots that would be paid during the first year of the abatement period. And that represents these property taxes here, and then twenty-five percent of the added value to the property as a result of the expansion. And then over the ten-year period, this is the projection of taxes and pilots, the twenty-five percent pilots that they pay, and then, as you've seen before, the city's in green, and that shows the benefit to the city. And then I've done the same calculation down here for personal property taxes, and for this type of analysis, we essentially isolate, there, there's no existing personal property in the facility for what they're expanding, so it's all, it's all added benefit with seventy-five percent abatement request. So the value of this incentive request to the developer, twenty-two million dollar project, the net present value of their real property tax abatement, and this is my independent calculation, it's actually, I think, a little bit less than what the developer calculated, just under a million dollars, which is four-point-five percent of the total project cost, and then the personal property tax abatement, it's about a half a percent, point-six percent of total project cost, and then the value of that sales tax exemption is about two percent. So my calculation of the reimbursement benefit to the company is about seven-point-one percent. And this, again, as we've talked about on many occasions, the range that we've seen in the past, five to twenty-five percent, so this is at the, the lower end of the incentive request that you've seen in the past. Then the impact to the city and the benefit to the city, the impact of the abated taxes is shown here, and this is a calculation essentially of if this project actually happened and no abatement was provided, these are the additional taxes that would be paid. So this is the impact to the city only. And then the benefits received by the city, that's the calculation down here, from the real property taxes and the pilots, the personal property tax, uh, paid on the machinery and equipment, and then the additional sales tax revenue, the results from those personal property purchases. That's the developer's calculation. And this is the new chart that you saw two weeks ago that I provided for another conceptual presentation, the summary of the summary, so you can be clear on what the requests are. I'll talk about the sources in more detail in a moment. They're proposing to use L-CRA, they could use Chapter One Hundred. First incentive tool is the sales tax exemption, purposes to reduce project costs for the developer, and I just ran through the calculation for you. Then the real property tax abatement for ten years at seventy-five percent, benefit to the company, and then personal property tax abatement, again, at seventy-five percent, and benefit to the company. And this is that benefit calculation summarized. The next slide that I have to show you, this is the chart that you've seen on many occasions in the past, it's a summary of the industrial incentive packages that have been provided in the region, the Missouri side of the Kansas City region, and an interesting note about this presentation tonight, the first iteration of this chart that you saw probably two years ago, eighteen months to two years ago, didn't have any Kansas, uh, didn't have any Lee's Summit projects on it. Now we're starting to develop some history down here, and so we're, we're including the incentives that you provided to the industrial projects, a quick review of those projects, the first was Lee's Summit Logistics, which was a very extensive incentive package, twenty years, ninety-five percent abatement for the first ten years, seventy-five percent for the next ten years. Zarega Pasta, that's a facility expansion, and as the applicant noted, their request tonight is, in all material respects, identical to the incentive that you approved for Zarega Pasta. Then we have the two other new industrial projects with the more extensive incentive abatement that you have approved. So in the range of incentives that you have already approved for industrial projects, you have those new projects that you provided an extensive abatement package to, and this is at the other end of the spectrum, this is more equivalent to, um, the incentive package that has been approved for Zarega Pasta. And then this is a refresh of the chart that you saw for the first time two weeks ago. These are all of the L-CRA redevelopment plans summarized, and so you'll see I've added the Performance Food Group request here. Uh, Colburn Ridge, that's the project that you saw two weeks ago. The key characteristics, this is an industrial-only project, it's requesting the two types of incentives that I just described. It would require a blight finding. Um, this is more in the nature of redevelopment because it's an expansion of a facility, and then they're not requesting any other types of incentives, just the, the incentive package through the L-CRA. So I'll finish with one additional point up here. Back on this chart, I noted that they could proceed with L-CRA or Chapter One Hundred. Their request is to use L-CRA, as we've discussed in the past, it's a more efficient tool, and it's actually more cost-effective for the company. Just like the presentation that you heard two weeks ago, that project was just outside to the north of the L-CRA area that was created by the City Council in twenty-fourteen, this one is just outside to the south. We, we actually took some time to investigate the question, why wasn't this parcel included in that twenty-fourteen finding? We dug into the records associated with that, that, um, ordinance that was approved by the City Council in twenty-fourteen, we actually called the company that prepared the blight study for the city and did the work for the city, which was Development Strategies, I believe was the company. So we, we investigated the, the question as thoroughly as we could, why wasn't this property included in that L-CRA area in twenty-fourteen? Couldn't find any evidence of a precise answer why this parcel, but this area, just to the south of the L-CRA area, wasn't included because as of twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, this facility was only about twelve, thirteen years old. And as best we can tell, the decision was made by city staff and then the city council at that time to not include those areas because they weren't some of the older areas of the city that was, at that point in time, relatively new development, about a decade old or so. And now, fast forward another, um, you know, decade or so, and we have a more aged facility. That's the best that we could discern as to why that, that, this parcel wasn't included in that finding. But their request is to make a blight finding on this property and use the L-CRA tool. So I will conclude there and be happy to answer questions or discuss as needed.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions for staff or applicant? Council member Demora?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is for the applicant, actually, if I could, the, I, I understand that the, the current, the current workforce average, uh, compensation's thirty-five dollars an hour. Would these be, would the new, new jobs be entry-level jobs, or some of them would be skilled labor that would, that would be qualified for the thirty-five dollars an hour?
No, it would absolutely be a combination, uh, of the skilled labor. We use a lot of tractor-trailers and a lot of Class A drivers, so we really don't have any entry-level operations positions. So as we grow, it requires salespeople, it requires warehouse people to select and load the trucks, and it requires the, the delivery drivers to drive it, so all of those are, are skilled positions in our world and very safety-sensitive.
And, uh, will this addition allow you to expand your service area also? Are you still going to just concentrate on, on the service area that you already presently have?
No, we want to continue to, um, grow our existing service area. This is still a very fragmented industry, uh, in the food service industry, but there are, there is still, um, in excess of, of two billion dollars of opportunity just in the greater Kansas City area within the food distribution, so we lose all our efficiencies the farther we get away from our home base.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council... Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify on what's proposed. Is this going to be just all expansion or will it be renovation of the existing facility? I think it was mentioned that you're now getting into, you know, 22, 25 years old. Are you wanting to give a facelift to the existing building as well?
So for the existing building, we've continued to maintain that and upgrade that as we go. For anybody that's driven by Southeast Thompson, we've repainted the outside of the building, and now it's bright red when you go by on the awnings. All of the dock doors were replaced within the last 12 months. All of the dock seals, we put well over half a million dollars into our parking lot over the last two to three years. And the interior has all been carpeted, painted. The warehouse has been retrofitted with LED lighting. So this would only be for the new.
Okay, thank you. And then I think this question is probably for Mr. Bushak, then. I assume, since you're bringing this before us, or it's being brought before us, that this would meet the legal definition for a blight finding, even though the property has been well-maintained? Can you talk to us a little bit about that?
Yep, that's a good question. So there's a concept that has been supported by Missouri case law called economic underutilization as the basis for a blight finding. And it's the idea that if you make the finding that the property is economically underutilized and needs an incentive for expansion, then it's valid to make a blight finding based on the economic underutilization theory. Little counterintuitive as compared to some of the blight findings you made in the past, but I can say with a good degree of confidence that it would be a valid blight finding if you decide to make that blight finding based on that factor. Also, I will say that economic underutilization has been a factor that the City Council has considered in its blight findings in the past, but I can't think of an example where that's been exclusively the basis of the blight finding. That's been one of many factors that the City Council's relied on in the past.
And then, so in this case, would that be the main or the sole factor, or are there other?
I think it would probably have to be, given what we just heard.
Thank you. Mayor, do you want to hear opinions at this point?
Yeah, please.
I mean, I think it seems like a good project in line with what we've done before. We've talked at this dais about how important it is to not only bring in new business, but retain and expand existing businesses, so I appreciate that. I think I would be supportive of it based on that and the fact, I really appreciated the, what the walkthrough you gave in terms of the financials, Mr. Bushak, that it's not going to reduce the tax revenue of the existing structure, it's just a matter of giving a break for the new improvements that are made. So I think that that makes sense, and I would be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One was just a follow-up on a, I believe, from our presenter today. There was this, a phrase about this would support a higher abatement or a larger percentage. So 75% was the number that's being presented generally, and I recall a phrase you said where it could be higher, and I was just curious if that could be, you could substantiate what you mean by that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So this is as per, I'll give you the exact, this is in the lease summit incentive policy. So there's an exhibit in there, and it goes through and says, well, what is your percentage over the county average wage? How many new jobs are you creating? And then there's guidance as to what that, abatement that would support. So it's page 44.
Okay, that's what I was just asking if you could, you're in the Economic Development Policy, okay, and you're page 44. Okay, so I was just curious what?
So even if we're over 100%, but even if you were at 100 and you created 25 jobs, it would support a 10-year 100% abatement? We're going to create a minimum of 35, but we're asking for 75. That's what I was alluding to.
I'm looking at that exhibit now, and it's a very busy.
It is. It's extremely busy.
Very busy chart, so I'd have to think about it a little bit. I mean, I don't doubt your assessment and analysis of it, I just wanted to understand where you were coming from when you said that.
Right, understood. Good question.
I appreciate that. Okay, and if I could ask, I think, a few questions, these might be for Mr. Bushak. Yes, they will be.
Okay.
Some of these might be a little elementary, so just can you remind me, we're obviously in a conceptual presentation, so the procedure for public notice to other taxing jurisdictions, does it differ as between LCRA or Chapter 100? Obviously, we're leaning towards LCRA as a preferred?
Yes, so the notice requirement is different. The LCRA notice requirement is simply that we publish notice in the newspaper two times before a public hearing before the City Council. That's the only notice requirement, and we have not enhanced those notice requirements. So as part of the LCRA process, we haven't added to our own code any other notices besides that one notice requirement. If we use Chapter 100, there is an actual notice that's sent to the taxing districts that includes the plan and the cost-benefit analysis. That's not something that we, that's not something that's in the code with respect to the LCRA process.
And do we do those additional things with Chapter 100 as?
That's required by the statute, yes. So in both cases, Chapter 100 and LCRA, we do exactly what the statute calls for.
And that obviously is perhaps part of, is that part of why that would be a preferred mechanism, or is that?
No, I don't think the notice is a factor. LCRA, as we discussed in recent council meetings, the LCRA, so one key factor, Chapter 100 compared to LCRA, Chapter 100 requires a bond transaction and a real estate transaction. The bond transaction requires us to use bond counsel, and it's more expensive for the applicant. The LCRA tool, we don't need a bond transaction, we only use the real estate transaction. We've discussed this in the past. The city takes ownership of the property during the abatement period, leases it to the company. We've discussed the lease and the lease safeguards. That lease is present in both Chapter 100 and LCRA, but for LCRA, there's no bond transaction, which is why it's effectively a more efficient tool for the applicant.
Is there anything that the city loses out on, or are there any security that we lose when you don't have that, the bond element of the transaction?
No. So the safeguards that we include in the lease are identical in both cases. They're model, one is LCRA, so when we started using the LCRA tool more extensively, starting about five years ago, the lease that we use for the LCRA transactions is a mirror essentially of our Chapter 100 lease, so they have all the same safeguards.
And then I'm going to jump back to public notice, or notice to the other taxing jurisdictions. Again, the distinction was LCRA is we're publishing in a newspaper twice, certain timeframe beforehand, and then the other is we actually are sending them communication directly to those taxing jurisdictions and the study results?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and then, and understanding the public hearing process, when we have these preliminary discussions, these conceptual presentations, we don't incorporate them into the public record when we actually hold the public hearing. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. So the record that's presented to you when we hold the public hearing, there's the list of exhibits. The exhibits include all the documents that the LCRA board sees when they hold their public hearing. It includes the plan, the cost-benefit analysis, the blight study, all of the documents that we need to create a complete record, and then all of the testimony at that public hearing that becomes part of the record, too. And based on how things have been going over the last several years, that public hearing is essentially a repeat of what we're talking about in these conceptual presentations, because we get into quite a bit of detail here with the conceptual, but all the same analysis, documents, spreadsheets, et cetera, that all becomes part of the record when we hold that public hearing.
But we, and we don't, as we incorporate things in that, there's been times where we've had a discussion where we incorporate a prior part of the same meeting into, you know what I'm talking about?
I do. So there have been times where we have a public hearing on an incentive request and a public hearing on the zoning step, one after the other in the same agenda. And because there's such extensive discussion at the first public hearing, you've heard our city attorney say, we're going to incorporate all of that discussion and all that evidence into the record in the second public hearing, so there's a match in those public hearings.
Actually, I usually say that.
Oh, sorry. And Mayor reminds our city attorney to do that.
And so I guess my point in bringing this up is, to the extent we get in any, in the weeds in particular here, it, again, is totally preliminary, and if we, as a council, want to have the public record made public, or if you will, recorded, if you will, we need to make sure we're analyzing it with the same kind of detail or discussion in the actual public hearing.
Yes, we can certainly do that. And all of the documents and the numbers and the calculations that serve for whatever discussion we're having tonight, they will be part of that record. So, and this is the kind of thing that I'm concerned about, in the unlikely event of a lawsuit, and we're in court, and we need to have the record that was created below at this proceeding go to court, we have all the documents and evidence as part of the record, even if we don't discuss everything during that public hearing, it's all, it's all part of the documentary record.
And is there, for our, sorry, I'm getting into now, our stance as a public body when we're analyzing the standard we use, and we've had this discussion once or twice, and how it may differ different, depending on what kind of public matters brought to us, like a, oh?
TIF plan, maybe?
TIF, and then I'm thinking also when you have a special use permit, it's a different, we're in a different posture.
Ah, so all proceedings regarding incentive requests are legislative proceedings. In the zoning context, rezoning hearings are legislative, special use permits are quasi-judicial. So this, if this proceeds, this will be a purely legislative proceeding, and the law provides that you have much more discretion with incentive requests than you do making zoning decisions. So even though they're both legislative in nature according to law, you have much more discretion to say yes or no to an incentive request.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate kind of walking through that. Get back to the incentive, just as a reminder for us, when we say pilots start, and we talked about the first year, the distinction in terms of the dollar amount?
Yes.
That's after the project is completed, if I am correct?
Correct.
So we're talking 2025 or 20, I think we said it was, you know, break ground this year, perhaps completed by 2025, so this would actually be a couple of years in the future.
Correct. So it's likely, and I'd have to double-check the spreadsheets to verify this, but the intention is when we say first year taxes and pilots, the year that the abatement kicks in. And so, thinking about the construction sequence, let's say they start construction this year, they complete sometime next year, it's, there's the possibility that the county could revalue the property of January 1st next year and see that they've done some construction, and so increase the valuation of the property a bit, but what we really do is take a snapshot on January 1st after completion, and that's year one of the 10-year cycle.
Got it. Great. Thank you, Mr. Bushak. And Mayor, just to kind of follow up on Councilmember Shields, and so no more questions, I would just kind of reiterate similar thoughts that she shared, that this is, I think, a positive project. If you're looking for thoughts and opinions, certainly would favor the applicant going forward through the process. I do, I do appreciate, thank you, Mr. Bushak, for kind of walking through that, because as much as I think it's great for us as a council to have the conceptual presentation and work through it, I really value that chance when we are actually then giving official public notice to our constituents and to any other interested parties, in particular the taxing jurisdictions, to make sure they have the full opportunity to participate in it. But again, I would be in favor of telling staff and the applicant or the Reinhardt to move forward and move forward on to the next step.
Right. Thank you. Very good. Mayor Patim Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have questions. I think most of the questions have been asked by my colleagues, and I appreciate the questions. Very thorough. More comments, I guess. Yeah, and I appreciate, T M, your presentation, very thorough. Thank you for doing your homework, and it sounds like you got coached up pretty well. So, but we do appreciate that, and these questions, I do appreciate my colleagues' questions because we do have to vet these, every project that comes before us, even in a conceptual process. But you want my perspective, Mayor? Absolutely. This is something that if all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and checked out by Mr. Bushak and our whole staff, if these all come in line with what's being proposed, definitely would be in favor of this. You know, I think as a body, we look at a lot of new, fancy, new investors that want to come into our community to build something new and bring new jobs. Since day one, I have felt just as strong or stronger about business retention and keeping existing jobs, keeping existing industries that make an impact in this community, and the fact that they're wanting to invest more, a lot of it on their dime and create more jobs. Absolutely, if everything checks out, I think I'd be in favor of the applicant pursuing this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably just echo what Councilmember Shields and my other councilmembers have mentioned. I just want to make sure it is, the abatement is just the increment of the increase, right? So we're not losing that existing tax base that currently exists.
That's right. So that's one of the things that, I'm going to go back to the developer's presentation here to kind of highlight what I'm talking about. In the case of Zarega Pasta, there was a building footprint, and then they haven't done it yet, but they were proposing to add a separate building that's sort of attached. And that would have allowed the opportunity to create two clean tax parcels to implement that incentive. Here, they're sort of adding on to the existing building, and so this will still function as one tax parcel, and so what they proposed is the abatement will just be 25% of the increased value that's added to the parcel. So the county will still be valuing this parcel, taxes will still be paid based on the valuation as it exists today, and one other component, which I didn't get into yet because we didn't need to, their modeling shows that the increased value in year one will be frozen essentially. And so as the county increases the value over time, that's added to the base taxes that will be paid to the taxing districts. So that 25, 75% split gets locked in for 10 years, that's a more elaborate way of saying yes. It's only on the added value, and the added value as measured by that first year as opposed to each year.
Great, thank you. And Mayor, I would just say, I think, you know, reinvesting in this facility, adding more jobs, wanting to, you know, continue to be a great partner here in this city, I think this is a good use of the incentive. I think the impact is minimal, like as far as the taxing jurisdiction, and it's just, it's a good way to encourage growth, and would love to see him stay here, and I'm in support of it as it is right now. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Other questions? Comments? Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, just I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just make a few comments. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Lovell, I like the jobs and the return on investment, but I'm excited about the fact that, you know, they didn't come to us with one foot out the door. You believed in us to come forward and work with us and see if we would work with you on expansion, to keep your whole company here, and especially to bring new jobs here. So that's a good thing for us, and we appreciate that as a partner, to be able to have this kind of conversation and discussion like this. I'm curious about the building. The, are you going to, I just, I know this is not the time, but it is conceptual, so I can go a little outside the lines here. Are you going to add to the parking lot there? Because you're going to add all that dry storage area, I noticed you don't have any garage doors on that, but you've got a big parking lot and you've got a lot of land behind it. I just wondered if you were going to add there.
Yes, Mayor. We actually solved our parking lot problem about three years ago. When the Toys R Us facility moved out, our parking lot was full at that time. They had no use for their fleet shop in the back, so we signed a very long-term lease utilizing their fleet shop, and we have 100 parking spaces there. So my 45 tractors and my 45 company trailers are parked less than a quarter mile down the road. So it gave us all the efficiencies we needed to be able to stay, because that's really what started this discussion even before the building filled up, the parking lot filled up, which means at least half of my employees are parked down the road.
Do you provide golf carts for them to, you know? I'm just curious.
During construction, there will probably be a shuttle van going back and forth.
Well, I'm glad that you're able to utilize this, your parcel, the way you have, and I love the way you, I mean, you squared it off and everything, I mean, looks like it's pretty efficient. So that's a positive. You sure do have a lot of trucks there on Google Maps, though, I will tell you. You ever check yourself out on Google Maps? It's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Well, just, we really like transportation, distribution.
Some of those trucks, what look like trucks, are probably the storage trailers where we're keeping dry inventory right now, so those will go away.
Cool.
So it'll look even better.
Yeah. So, and you've been around for quite some time, and absolutely many of us have seen you in the community, and we appreciate that, too, the way you engage with the community, and it's been that way. I know there's I know there's been numerous iterations of who owns the company, but you've had a real positive impact in the community and we hope you continue that, too. So spread that, spread that news around because we like the partnership. So, and that's why you're here in positivity today, because you're also a known entity and you'll deliver on what you're saying, so.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I think with that, you've got marching orders to bring back something more concrete and we'll go through this again in detail because Councilmember Felker is going to make sure that we cross every t and dot every i. So, yeah. So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Bushak? Any further comment?
No, I'm just closing down there.
Okay. Well, do you all, you all need a break? Good? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and go right into resolutions. We'll start off with Ms. R. Currie Fowler. Would you please read Resolution 23-07. Ms. Fowler R. Currie, I said it backwards again, Fowler R. Curly.
That's all right. I'm going to be reading more tonight. I almost want Councilmember Shields to take over on these. Resolution number 23-07, a resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the April 4th, 2023 general municipal election. For question one, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $74 million for the purpose of acquiring land, acquiring, constructing, furnishing and equipping buildings and facilities, making certain renovations and improvements to existing facilities, and acquiring equipment and network technology improvements for public safety and emergency preparedness purposes.
Thank you. We have a resolution read by our city clerk, number 23-07. This resolution has a motion to be adopted by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you to the council and to our citizens. Next would be Ms. Fowler R. Currie, resolution number 2308.
Resolution number 23-08, a resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the April 4th, 2023 general municipal election for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $98 million for the transportation purposes, including without limitation acquiring land and rights of way and acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, repairing and improving streets, roads, bridges and sidewalks throughout the city and acquiring, constructing, renovating and improving the airport.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Resolution 2308 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's also unanimous that that resolution is adopted. Thank you. Ms. Fowler R. Currie, would you please read Resolution number 2309?
Resolution number 23-09, a resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the April 4th, 2023 general municipal election for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $14 million for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, renovating, improving and equipping municipal buildings, facilities and network technology, infrastructure and systems, including renovations and improvements to city hall and maintenance facilities.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Resolution 2309 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Also adopted unanimously, thank you. And finally, would you please read Resolution 2310?
Resolution number 2310, a resolution canvassing and declaring the results of the April 4th, 2023 general municipal election for question four, authorizing a city sales tax of 3% on all retail sales of adult-use non-medical marijuana sold in the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Resolution number 2310 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That resolution is adopted. Thank you all. Okay, proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill number 23-076?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 23-076, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2023-041 for professional engineering services for Sampson Road Bridge replacement and stormwater improvements project to Wilson and Company, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $584,534 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-076 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves forward to second reading, 9-0. Councilmember Edson, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number 23-076, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2023-041 for professional engineering services for Sampson Road Bridge replacement and stormwater improvement project to Wilson and Company, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $584,535 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-076 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 23-077?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I knew my place. I move for second reading of Bill number 23-077, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 97631683 for the cathodic protection program for FY '23 to Wheaton &amp; Inc. in the amount of $993,300 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-077 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves forward 9-0. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of Bill number 23-077, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 97631683 for the cathodic protection program FY '23 to Wheaton &amp; Inc. in the amount of $993,300 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-077 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill number 23-078?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill number 23-078, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 767-C for the Langsford and Milton Thompson Water Main Upsized Program to Infrastructure Solutions LLC in the amount of $1,598,880 and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-078 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves forward 9-0. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 23-078, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 767-C for the Langsford and Milton Thompson Water Main Upsized Program to Infrastructure Solutions LLC in the amount of $1,598,880 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-078 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill number 23-079?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill number 23-079, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 569 for the Colburn Road improvements from M. 350 Highway to Douglas Street to Clarkson Construction Company in the amount of $25,999,806.77 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-079 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, not so much discussion, but just, this is that project we talked about the other night. This is that $26 million project on Colburn Road, which is a massive deal. I don't, I just, I know we've already reviewed it in depth in committee. I'm not going to ask staff to go through it, but it's a great thing for our city and for our future development. So appreciate all the work the staff has done. I mean, we go through it quickly, but I just acknowledge all the work they've done in putting it together.
It's been in the works for quite a long time. I remember talking about my first year. So that was four years ago. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it moves forward 9-0. Councilmember Pryor, for adoption, please.
I move to advance, I move for adoption, Bill number 23-079, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 569 for the Colburn Road improvements from M. 350 Highway to Douglas Street to Clarkson Construction Company in the amount of $25,999,806.77 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-079 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you all. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 23-080?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, Bill number 23-080, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement for facility relocation by and between the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri and Spire, Missouri Incorporated in the amount of $535,643 for the Colburn Road improvements from M. 350 Highway to Douglas Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-080 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Demora. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves forward 9-0. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption of Bill number 23-080, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement for facility relocation by and between the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri and Spire, Missouri Incorporated in the amount of $535,643 for the Colburn Road improvements from M. 350 Highway to Douglas Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-080 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next is Councilmember Felker. Would you please read Bill number 23-081?
Mayor, I move that Bill number 23-081 be second read, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 791-OV for the mill and overlay FY '24 program to Amino Brothers Co., Inc. in the amount of $3,825,766.45 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-081 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The bill moves to second reading, 9-0. Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I move that Bill number 23-081 be adopted, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 791-OV for the mill and overlay FY '24 program to Amino Brothers Co., Inc. in the amount of $3,825,766.45 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-081 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, just a quick comment. I know I just bring this to maybe councilmembers' attention and reflecting my own learning process as a councilmember, that this is one of those, this is that project where your road gets redone. Or if you will, the mill, it milled down a little bit and a new asphalt put across. And the Public Works Department has a very extensive method and process for making sure they're going around town and keeping our roads up to date, as well as the sidewalks, shooting that sidewalk, yes sidewalks, but in combination with the curb replacement program. So I just encourage you at some point to maybe spend some time with Public Works and see how that process goes so you can be better informed with what is going on in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Are you encouraging me or the citizens? I just am confused.
I'm actually talking to council and of course, citizens are just good to know, too. There's so much information and I think sometimes people wonder why it's happening here but not here and that there is a process and that there is really a very thoughtful approach to doing it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Especially after the winter, even though it wasn't that bad of a winter, but.
There's a few roads out there.
Yeah. Don't get me started. Okay, we have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-081 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. All right. Mayor Patim Lopez, would you please read Bill number 23-082?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 23-082, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement regarding cost sharing for road maintenance and overlay and regarding capital improvement project paid for by the city of Lee's Summit and Jackson County to mill and overlay Langsford Road west of Blackwell Road to Wildflower Drive. There's a typo on my, on my page. And authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-082 by Mayor Patim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves forward unanimously. Mayor Patim Lopez, would you please?
Yes. I now move for adoption of Bill number 23-082, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement regarding cost sharing for road maintenance and overlay and regarding capital improvement project paid for by the city of Lee's Summit and Jackson County to mill and overlay Langsford Road west of Blackwell to Wildflower Drive and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. Is that the city limits? Wildflower? That's the end of the city limits. It is?
Yeah. Mayor, it kind of threw me off.
Yeah. Yeah. So we take care of every corner of the community, then? Every, yep.
Just for the record, Mayor, my ordinance reads Wildflower. There's no L. I want to make sure we got the right street.
On the actual ordinance, it's correct.
Okay, all right.
The official version is correct.
Good.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, this is a motion to adopt, so any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Demora, would you please read Bill number 23-083?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill number 23-083, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperative service agreement by and between the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri, and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service in the amount of $1,900 to conduct a wildlife hazard site visit and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23-083 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves forward unanimously. Councilmember Demora, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, Bill number 23-083, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperative service agreement by and between the city of Lee's Summit, Missouri and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services in the amount of $1,900 to conduct a wildlife hazard site visit and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23-083 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted, thank you. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero eight four?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I just want to point out that we started with Public Works and we're still doing Public Works.
Yes.
I just want to point that out.
Yes, but Councilmember Felker wants us to contact Public Works and keep the conversation going.
I agree with Councilmember Felker, actually. I just want to point that out. I move for second reading of bill number twenty-three dash zero eight four, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, by amending appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the city of Lee Summit.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight four by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And that's, moves to second reading, nine zero, Councilmember Edson, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash zero eight four, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, by amending appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the city of Lee Summit.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero eight four by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero eight five?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill number twenty-three dash O eight five, an ordinance approving a transportation alternatives program funding agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number TAP three zero zero one zero zero six, complete street improvements Douglas Street to Chipman Road to Second Street within the city limits of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight five by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash O eight five, an ordinance approving a transportation alternatives program funding agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number TAP three zero zero one zero zero six, complete street improvements Douglas Street to Chipman Road to Second Street within the city limits of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero eight five by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you all, thank you Public Works Department and Public Works Committee. Councilmember Shields, or no, Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero eight six?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight six, an ordinance approving amendment number fourteen to the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, is adopted by ordinance number nine four four one, ordinance number nine four four two, ordinance number nine four four nine, ordinance number nine four five zero, and ordinance number nine four five one by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight six by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves to second forward, moves second reading unanimously, Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight six, an ordinance approving amendment number fourteen to the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, is adopted by ordinance number nine four four one, ordinance number nine four four two, ordinance number nine four four nine, ordinance number nine four five zero, and ordinance number nine four five one by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero eight six by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero eight seven?
Thank you, Mayor, and I also just wanted to point out that Councilmember DeMoro is on Public Works Committee and Finance and Budget Committee, so I think this is all his fault.
It is.
I move to advance to a second reading, bill number two-three dash zero eight seven, an ordinance approving amendment number fifteen to the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as adopted by ordinance number nine four four one, ordinance number nine four four two, ordinance number nine four four nine, ordinance number nine four five zero, and ordinance number nine four five one by amending the full-time equivalents for its fire, public works, and finance, and the pay and classification plan for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight seven by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Do I need to recue, am I okay to read this one? And am I, do I need to recuse myself?
So, this ordinance is just allowing for additional FTEs within the fire department. It has no budgetary, sorry, impact, it's just allowing us to advance the hiring process under the public safety sales tax implementation, so we're okay, David?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves forward to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
Thank you, I move for adoption, bill number two-three dash zero eight seven, an ordinance approving amendment number fifteen to the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as adopted by ordinance number nine four four one, ordinance number nine four four two, ordinance number nine four four nine, ordinance number nine four five zero, and ordinance number nine four five one by amending the full-time equivalents for its fire, public works, and finance, and the pay and classification plan for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight seven by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you all, and now, finally, yes, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight eight, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read for second reading?
I move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight eight, an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-three Combat Drug Commission, LESBI, agreement by and between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Jackson County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, it says adopt online, thank you. Motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight eight by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading, so now, Councilmember Hodges, would you read, please read for adoption?
I move for the adoption of bill number twenty-three dash zero eight eight, an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-three Combat Drug Commission, LESBI, agreement by and between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Jackson County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero eight eight by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you, and finally, we're going to go to proposed ordinance's first reading. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero eight nine?
Certainly, Mayor, I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero eight nine, an ordinance repealing ordinance number seventy-three eighty-six dealing generally with automated license plate reader technology.
All right, thank you, we have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero eight nine by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted some background on why we're reading this tonight, I thought we had just amended that ordinance like a week ago.
Mr. Dunning?
From the discussion from the last meeting, after we talked through that, in order to clean it up, and the direction from the council was, we would, I think we ended up tabling, if I recall correctly, the previous ordinance, and then the direction was to bring back an ordinance just repealing what was in place, so that's my recollection, the previous ordinance that was proposed was tabled, and then we were directed to bring back an ordinance repealing.
If that's the feeling of the council?
We had a fiery discussion, it wasn't really fiery, it was just back and forth, and it went on for a long time, and it kind of came to this one point where, I'm going to blame Councilmember Hodges, she turned the tide and said, if we're not doing this for body cameras, why are we doing this for license plate readers? And then we all just kind of talked some more, and we ended up directing staff to create this ordinance to repeal it, but not without Councilmember Lovell making sure that it was, he was clear that he didn't see a reason for doing that, why not just keep this ordinance in place, I don't want to speak for you, but keep it in place because it's doing no harm, and all it is is a reporting mechanism, and I think we went back and forth on consistency versus, you know, what's the big deal, so.
Well, I don't need to rehash the discussion that I just happened to be absent for, so I apologize for that.
I should, I see Councilmember DeMoro is going to chime in, I really should blame him, because he's the one that wanted to do the repeal and kind of started the discussion off, so I'll let him speak after you get done. You good? Okay, Councilmember DeMoro?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, just a little background, I did a little research, and license plates have been used in the state of Missouri since nineteen eleven, so since nineteen eleven, they've been read...
Two thousand and eleven?
Nineteen eleven.
Nineteen eleven?
Nineteen eleven.
Oh, I thought you said readers, I'm sorry.
So law enforcement and whoever, you know, whoever's interested in looking at license plates has either been reading, recording, or writing down license plate numbers since nineteen eleven, and in two thousand and thirteen, the city council gave the authorization for a mobile unit, so we've gone from two thousand and thirteen till now, and all this is, as the manager said, just to clean up the ordinance, and it's nothing different, the repeal is nothing different than continuing the use of the LPRs and recognizing that the necessary oversight is provided with the accreditation, in other words, the police department has to go through an accreditation program, and everything they do, every procedure they take on is part of the accreditation, and that's where, if any oversight is needed, the oversight would be in the accreditation process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Well, just piggyback, but it removes our ability just to see how and what the data is being used for, so it was just a final pass for the city to hear in public how we collect this information, what we do with it, and repealing this, yes, there's other boards that will do that, so it really wasn't going to affect anything, I would say the argument against the, I don't know, we kept bringing up the body cameras, but this is collecting data not in an act of pursuit, but just continual data collection, which is fine, I have no problem with that, the ordinance just says, hey, here's what we can do with that data, and so I felt like it was a harmless ordinance, again, a good way to come before the city and say, hey, we're collecting this information, but just so you know, here's what we're doing with it, so that's what I felt the intention of the ordinance was, so anyway, thanks, Mayor.
No, thank you. Councilmember Felker?
I actually have a question, so do we have, do other jurisdictions have a similar ordinance as it currently exists? Who's going to answer?
Chief Forbes, please have an idea, but I think I recall Chief Forbes mentioning that, you know, it's really department policy, I think the reason we had the ordinance was just, it was new technology, and that's why we were, the council at that time felt that let's utilize the technology, but let's use it in a pretty limited and fashion, and have some reporting to this until we get comfortable with it, but I'll let Chief speak to that.
Mayor, members of council, Travis Forbes, Chief of Police, I've done an exhaustive research of the entire state or anything like that, but I am not aware in our region of any city ordinances controlling license plate readers.
And similar, not that it's necessarily the topic we're looking at, but since we mentioned it, body cameras, similar lack of ordinances that over, where a, the legislative body, the council or board or the alderman, whatever, you're not aware that other municipalities have a oversight provision in the ordinance?
I'm not aware of that either, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and Mayor, I mean, I actually appreciate Councilmember Lovell's concerns, and I guess, you know, as long as we still have the means, which we do as a legislative body, if we're aware of abuses, and again, not to state that that would be the case, but if we become, I guess the question is, you know, if we become aware of abuses, can we legislate? And we can. And, and maybe Chief Forbes, sorry, I'll actually come right back up. The oversight that would continue to be in place, I know we're kind of deferring to the accreditation and so forth, that, in addition to the fact that there is the Public Safety Advisory Board, which is really what you're reporting to in more detail, or you're asked questions, and that board consists of, you know, members of the community who've been appointed by the mayor or previous mayors, et cetera, who sit on that board, and again, they could be the ones to grill you on these things, and if there are issues, the idea would be they would bring that forward to us, or be brought to our attention. Would that be an accurate way of kind of thinking through how it can be dealt with?
Yes, sir, I see oversight in a few different ways. First, the Public Safety Advisory Board, as you just mentioned, and I think that is accurate, as Councilmember DeMoro mentioned, the Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, CALEA, through our accreditation process, and the final way is the city probably ten to fifteen years ago attached an attorney to the police department and from the law department that helps guide us every day in the decisions that we make, and the contracts we sign, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is extremely unique, and it is something that I value greatly as a police chief. I know of no other police chief in this region of a city of our size that has that luxury of having an attorney that I can consult with at any moment to assure that I'm on track. Some cities don't even have law departments in this region, so it was a very forthcoming of this city to make that move, and that's a third level, and there's been many occasions when we've discussed policies that that legal advisor has, said, hey, this is a consideration you might take into account, so there's a few different mechanisms that are at play as far as oversight. I could misuse lots of data, or my personnel could misuse lots of data, and the city manager would certainly figure out how that happened, and why it happened, and who was responsible. Again, this is one part of the data that we have that goes through the police department that could potentially be misused, and is not really controlled by ordinance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll just make a comment, and we are fortunate to have a police department and several other organizations within the city who are, who meet various standards, accreditations, et cetera, that various organizations, third parties present and provide guidelines to elevate, really, hopefully, our performance as, whether it's a police department or any other part of our city organization, and I think that's great, and it's good, I also just, I think, and maybe this is, not to put words in Councilmember Lovell's mouth, but maybe part of his thinking and mine to some extent as well, is we still need to maintain our position as a legislative body, and so I will actually vote in favor of this ordinance, but I do so with the mindset that we are the legislative body that we should be grateful for those accreditation standards, those various third-party organizations, but should never relinquish the fact that we should see them as tools to help advance where our city's going, and I believe, generally speaking, that's the case, that's what's happening, but I think it's also always our prerogative as really representatives of the voters and taxpayers to make sure that we're being mindful what those are, we're not rubber stamp, not being a rubber stamp, we're thoughtful and we're asking questions, and so, Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add, I'll just add to what Councilmember Felker said, not only that, but it's really the bigger problem if we're not making sure that our police is not following their accreditation, how do you say it, CALEA?
Yes, yes, sir.
What's it stand for?
The Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, I believe.
Okay, so C-A-L-E-A, or something like that, so...
C-A-L-E-A, yes, sir.
Okay, so we have to make sure that we are following those policies, too, in other words, that's our, that's our, because the policies are fairly uniform nationally, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, super uniform, so we just need to make sure we're following those and not going outside those policies, because that's how you then, all of a sudden, somebody misuses data, but I appreciate the discussion, so it's good stuff. Any further comment? All right, so this would be, we're repealing, so just so you know how you're voting, a yes is to repeal, so I have a motion to move to second reading by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's 7-2 in favor. So we will move that to second reading. We'll have discussion, this discussion on May 2nd. Again. All right. Thank you all. Committee reports? Oh, one before we go there. Were you talking about Beth Morano? Is she the city attorney? You know, she doesn't, we don't get to see Beth Morano. We get to see Mr. Bushak all the time. But Beth, Beth Morano works, she's, she's probably, works as hard as you do. I mean, that woman works hard, you know? So she deserves some kudos. Tell her we gave her kudos. Thank you. Committee reports? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that we've been having some positive feedback on what's going on in the legislature with funding for the Troop A headquarters relocation, also with the bill regarding landfill. So I really appreciate everyone on council, including the mayor, that has gone and talked to legislators, testified about those items, and also all the members of our community who have been vocal. So I just wanted to report on that.
Thanks for bringing that up. Councilmember DeMoro?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a note about the Finance and Budget Committee. We are still, you know, in, in the budget process. Nothing big to report. It really, you know, the, the heavy weight starts next month, actually, and then leads into June. So, you know, I'll keep everybody apprised. But it's, it's ongoing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Shocked Public Works doesn't have something to say after tonight. All right. Council comments? Yes, sir. Councilmember Felker?
I'm coming, anyway. So if I could, in the kind of the spirit of council roundtable, share, instead of a comment, because I would have shared this earlier. So I was going to recognize my daughters in the audience, Audrey and Lauren, who have actually spent a whole day at the State Capitol with a group of teenagers from the Church of Jesus Christ, Latter-day Saints, from throughout the state of Missouri, met with the governor and the first lady, the secretary of state, a couple legislators themselves. They led some of those meetings, which was really neat. And then the chief justice for the Missouri Supreme Court. Great day for them and for the peers that they were with. It was just phenomenal. And in keeping, I'll just kind of reflect what councilmember Shields just said in terms of reporting the committee. I know that they were mentioning to me that some of the representatives were speaking positively about the Highway Patrol building. I think you said something about that and getting a nod from Audrey.
Nice.
She said, yeah, Representative Sanders said something about a building moving and money in the school and made a comment about, she actually made a comment about, he made a comment to her about the unfortunate passing of a teacher, our school district, because of the road and trying to get a, a median of some kind was, was something he'd mentioned. And then there was also some commentary from Representative Ingle about the landfill. So also positive. I know we've already heard that in our emails and just stated.
Yeah, but you went and closed the deal with your amazing daughters.
They're, they're working on it, working it.
I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty good that we got councilmember Felker working the, working that angle for us.
And I just have to say, I, I know we sit here as a body, and sometimes we get kind of stuff thrown at us because of things we work through. And, and sometimes citizens may not always understand decisions we're making or, or may not know the full picture. And then you also see that at the state level and the federal level. But I also am a believer that, just like the people on this body, for the most part, those legislators are really good people who are just trying to do the right thing. They may have different opinions about how to go about doing it. And so then they fight those things out. But there's really good people out there doing good work, just like, again, I'm confident in all of us. So, Mayor, that's, I appreciate you indulging a little bit extra there. But thank you very much.
What year was our state? Did our state become a state? They don't, and none of them know either.
Google it.
I know. That is correct. Very good. All right. Couple of them have done their homework. I should have asked your dad, though. That would have been great. Put him on the spot. All right. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. So I maybe should have sent an email before, but I do have a question. So I saw that Independence won the best tasting water. But we get some of our water from Independence, but not all of it. We get some from Kansas City, right? But I didn't know how that was, how's it divided up? Like, is it, is it divided up? Does the whole city get Independence water? And then whatever we use over that, we get Kansas City? Or what is it?
We'll let Jeff Thorne respond to that question.
Thanks.
He'll tell you exactly how it works.
Jeff Thorne, Deputy Director, Water Utilities. We buy seven and a half million gallons a day from Independence every day. That is our lowest cost water. It comes in and it is spread throughout the city. We also purchase every day that goes above that, which is most these days with the growth of the city. Anything from seven and a half to, last year, up to 26 million gallons in a day. And that comes in at various points around the city. So what you get is a wonderful blend.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good answer because it's not the best tasting water we want. We want the most nutritious water. So it might be a blend.
I like that Independence doesn't add fluoride. Of course, you know, I'm, yeah, but yeah. So they don't, they don't add fluoride. I was reading the article, and it says that, like, it filters through the, their, the wells next to, I guess, the Missouri River, and it filters through, like, naturally. So, yeah, I thought it was really cool. I don't know what, how Kansas City gets their water. I mean, Missouri River, I guess. But I don't know the process it goes through.
All right. Well done. We are on staff roundtable.
I have quite a few items, Mayor. Thank you. The first in, under staff roundtables, we've provided the CIP, the draft CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, I should say, for the fiscal year '24 budget. The public comment period is open for that through April 30th. So if any members of the public would like to see that proposed plan, they can view that on our city website. And there's a button on there to submit public comment. So that information is out there for public comment. So that's connected to budget. This next item is also connected to our budget preparations. The, I've placed at your seat there memorandum about the city manager's recommendation for a performance or organizational audit per the Code of Ordinances. That is to be in writing and provided to you on or before the third meeting in April. So that is the city manager's recommendation for our, our inclusion in the fiscal year '24 budget. And I'll just share with you. Working with management team, felt that an internal controls audit would be appropriate. That being, we know over time that the way that the city collects revenue has changed dramatically. And so we felt it would be a good audit to do to, to make sure that we have all of our internal controls in place for all the different points in which funds are passed back and forth between the city and our stakeholders. So that, that's a piece that I emailed and then also provided to you in written form to meet the requirements of the, of the ordinance. And we're going to have a busy rest of the week and then weekend. On April 19th, that's this Thursday, Douglas Street improvements. There's a public, public meeting held here at City Hall. That'd be open house type style. So folks can come and go as they please between 5:30 and 7:30 if they have interest in the Douglas Street improvements between Chipman and Second Street. Then on the 20th, our Lee Summit Police Department is holding their awards ceremony at 4 o'clock at Legacy Christian Church.